Good evening. We'll call to order this meeting of the City Council of the City of Gehanna on Monday, October 20th, 2025. If you would please join me to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance delivered by our Vice President, Trenton Weaver.
Thank you. As we gather, we are grateful for, appreciate, and use each day that comes before us. For each day's duties and in each day's difficulties, we are challenged to give our best always in unity and in service to one another and our community. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the role?
Bowers.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
McGregor.
Here.
Padova.
Here.
Renner.
Here.
Schnitzer.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. Welcome to all of our guests in attendance this evening. We have a very full agenda with very diverse topics. So with that, let's ask if there are any additions or corrections to this evening's agenda. Hearing none, we'll move on to Section C, Presentations. The first presentation we have this evening is a swearing-in ceremony for new police officers with the Division of Police. Officers Kirsten Lishy and Cordell Cardy. Mayor Jadwin?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President. So, we are indeed honored to have two officers joining our Gehanna family this evening, Director Becker and Chief Spence. I believe we'll make some opening comments and then we will proceed to the administration of oath.
Good evening. Thanks, everybody. We're really excited as always to add to our ranks of Gehanna Police. We've got two outstanding examples here tonight. Kirsten Lish has been with us for a while, but she's been in training. She just graduated the third class of the Westerville Police Academy about a week and a half ago. Officer Thomas and Sergeant Henin were instructors during her class. And after that grueling six months, she's ready to get out here and begin field training and hit the street. And Cordell Cardy is literally fresh out of the oven. Today is his first day with the City of Gehanna. I don't think, when he came to work this morning, he even knew he was going to be here tonight. But he's here. He's an experienced law enforcement officer. He has experience in Johnstown and Blendon Township, and he's ready to learn the Gehanna way. So with that, I'd like to have, well, Chief, you want to make any remarks before the mayor?
Just again, thank you to the administration and council as we kind of work through hiring and bringing our ranks up to our authorized strength. Obviously, going through the academy has been quite grueling over these last few months, so, but all reports from the academy. Kirsten did a great job. Looking forward to getting her through the additional months of field training. And Cordell coming over from another agency again will enter into our field training program. So as we continue to work through those additions of staff, it's great that we're getting really great applicants that have made the training process for us easy. So, so thank you, everybody.
Are you doing the same time? You two could join me right here. Raise your right hands, please. Repeat after me. Ayes, Trenton?
Aye, Kirsten Lish.
Aye, Cordell Cardy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and statutes.
The Constitution and statutes.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Gehanna.
Of the City of Gehanna.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of police officer for the Gehanna Division of Police.
Police officer for Gehanna.
That was the test, to which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome to our conference.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Well, congratulations again to Officers Lish and Cardy. We really appreciate your service to our community and thank you, Director Becker and Chief Spence. Our next presentation this evening is a resolution presentation by City Council in Recognition of Arts and Humanities Month, and I will turn it over to Vice President Trenton Weaver to introduce this resolution.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. Honored this evening to present a resolution recognizing October as Arts and Humanities Month in the City of Gehanna. The theme for this year's Arts and Humanities Month at the national level is Stories Unite Us. And reflecting upon my time as a musician, as an artist myself, there is nothing quite like playing music together that unites us together. So we are honored this evening to be joined by representatives from the Gehanna Lincoln Instrumental Music Boosters. They are the support organization for grades six through 12 band and orchestra programs at our Gehanna-Jefferson Public Schools. The boosters exist to amplify the generous budget of the district and provide instrumental music students opportunities that they might not otherwise get to experience. On Saturday, October 4th, they did celebrate their 70th Annual Tag Day and set a new donation record, currently sitting at a little over $46,000. Folks can still donate online or by returning the envelope that was left at your door. So plenty of opportunities to still give and give generously. We are delighted this evening to be joined by President-elect Emily Kearns and Secretary Heather Kreitz, who have just a few words to say with us, and then we'll gather and present the resolution and take a few photos. I'll turn things over to you. Thank you so much for being here.
Good evening, Mayor Jadwin and City Attorney and Council members. As you said, I'm Emily Kearns. I'm President-elect for the Gehanna Lincoln Instrumental Music Boosters, better known as GLIME. I have two children who are in the band program. My son, my oldest son is here. He's been all the way through the band program since sixth grade. And I'm happy to be here with Secretary Heather Kreitz. Thank you for taking the time to recognize how vital the arts and arts education are to our community, as well as, or as we celebrate Arts and Humanities Month. We are honored to accept this resolution on behalf of our students. The mission of GLIME is to support, as you said, and you covered it really well, the mission of GLIME is to support the band and orchestra programs at Gehanna-Jefferson Public Schools. We see firsthand how music education positively impacts kids. It's not just a class. It's a place where our kids learn life skills like teamwork, discipline, and overcoming challenges. The incredible support that we, the incredible level of support we're able to provide for our students comes from the generosity of our neighbors. This brings me to the reason that we're here, the 70th, one of the reasons we were invited here tonight to celebrate our 70th Annual Tag Day, which started in 1955. And the money raised on this one-day event forms a significant portion of our annual budget. We are incredibly grateful for how much Gehanna-Jefferson community believes in the band and orchestra programs and our kids. I want to pass it to Heather to talk a little bit about what, how we use the support that the community gives us.
Thanks, Emily. I'm Heather Kreitz, and I have two children in the orchestra program. So I would like to share a few of the ways that GLIME directly supports our students. Our fundraising efforts allow GLIME to break down financial barriers for student musicians in need. GLIME supports the purchase and maintenance of expensive string, wind, and percussion instruments. We're looking forward to a new fleet of cello and basses to meet the demand of students who are interested in these instruments. GLIME funds guest clinicians, master classes with professional musicians, and commissioning new music by internationally renowned composers, offering our kids once-in-a-lifetime opportunities. We cover all contest fees for middle and high school students, making sure that every student can participate at no cost to them. Lastly, GLIME provides scholarships, both to graduating seniors, helping them continue their musical journey, but also to current students for camps and private instruction for specialty instruments. Our organization acts as the bridge connecting the generosity of Gehanna to well over 1,000 young musicians. We ensure they have the best equipment, experiences, and opportunities during their time in the Gehanna bands and orchestras. Thank you once again for inviting us.[735.13][735.13](applause)
Thank you so much. And if my colleagues would like to join me down, well, for a photo. And Madam Mayor, please, City Attorney, if you're welcome as well.
Three, two, one.
I'll get one, two, sorry. Three, two.
One.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, thank you so much to GLIME for all that you do for our students and their important enrichment that they are able to participate in in the high school and throughout our public school system. So congratulations and thank you again. Our next section on this evening's agenda is Hearing of Visitors. I do have one speaker slip. Are there any other speaker slips that we received this evening?
None.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Van Meter. The one speaker slip I have is from Mifflin Township Trustee Jamie Leesberg. And, Mr. Leesberg, I do apologize, but given the status on public hearing of visitors, it is a three-minute limitation, but we're always happy to engage with you further if that's not enough time.
Yeah, no problem. Excuse the apparel. I came right from practice. Last week, I got notified that there was a question about whether or not Mifflin Township was part of the development down at Creekside. Given that it's a seven-story building, I'm not sure anybody asked us if we could fight a fire in a seven-story building. But again, in the eight years that I was on council, it was never a question whether Mifflin was included in development projects. Again, I don't know, in the four years that I've been gone, if anything like that's changed. But for the record, we would like to be included in a county tax incentives, breaks, those kind of things. This is Chief Dunlevy. For those of you who don't know, don't remember, but we do have a one ladder truck that can serve that building, a building like that. If anything happened to that building, again, response times, those kind of things would be impacted severely, so.
Yeah, just real quick, thank you.
Counsel, again, tonight, we are excited about the growth and development. We definitely want to be a part of it. Unfortunately, a lot of our business has doubled in price. Fire trucks are doubled in price. There are a lot of expenses, and a project like this will involve us a lot of time, so we would gratefully consider, ask that you consider our involvement, and appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thanks for your time tonight. All right, if there are no further speaker slips, we'll move on to the next section of this evening's agenda, Section E, Public Hearing. We have a public hearing this evening on our agenda for Resolution 46-2025, a resolution adopting the Argahanna Strategic Plan and Economic Development Strategy. By way of introduction, this item was introduced at Committee of the Whole at last week's meeting and is scheduled for adoption next regular committee meeting on November the 3rd.
Counsel, regular counsel.
Regular council agenda on November 3rd. So pursuant to council rules 9.10 and 9.11, I have given a brief statement of the item under hearing. The administration is invited to make a presentation, and if they have none, then we will open public comment with three minutes allowed for public speakers. Speakers must complete a speaker slip and come to the podium when called, just as we do for hearing of visitors. Does the administration have any presentation to provide this evening?
No, not at this time.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the speaker slips that I have. Again, if you are interested in filling out a speaker slip, you may do so by approaching Mr. Van Meter on the side, or there's a podium outside of the glass doors. Maura O'Donnell.
Hello. My name is Maura O'Donnell, 278 Rivers End Road, Gehanna, Ohio. I'm here to support my, to voice my support for the strategic plan. As a member of the steering committee, I saw the plan come together over this last year while participating in feedback sessions and engaging with the public. Quite a few, quite a few of these, I saw you all there. Each time we came together as a steering committee, it was clear that our feedback and the publics were taken into consideration. I could see the edits made to the plan were a direct result of those engagement sessions and conversations. And I know that our elected officials and city employees will use this strategic plan as a guiding light in every decision they make for Gehanna. Thank you to everyone who has put work into creating this plan, and I'm excited to see the thoughts and opinions of our residents and local businesses shine through to guide our city with this new strategic plan. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. Are there any other speakers who wish to be heard during this public comment period? All right, hearing none, we will go ahead and close the public comment period for this item and move on to our consent agenda. We have one item on this evening's consent agenda that does require a second reading. Mr. Van Meter, would you please read Ordinance 41-2025 into the record?
Ordinance 0041-2025, an ordinance accepting Crescent Circle ST 1111, public roadway, storm water, and domestic water, public infrastructure improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. Is there a first to adopt the consent agenda as published?
Seven.
I have a first by Mr. Schnitzer.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Renner. Any discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the role?
Schnitzer.
Yes.
Renner.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
McGregor.
Yes.
Padova.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Bowers.
Yes. Motion carries, and we will, the consent agenda items are adopted as published. Section G, ordinances for introduction and first reading. Mr. Van Meter, would you please read the ordinances designated under Section G?
Ordinance 0044-2025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an easement agreement with Columbia Gas of Ohio, Inc., to provide natural gas service to the cell tower located at Lower McCorkle Park. Ordinance 0045-2025, an ordinance accepting an access easement agreement for 135 Saran Drive to provide city access to existing sanitary sewer infrastructure. Ordinance 0047-2025, an ordinance to accept a sanitary sewer easement on properties located at 490 and 495 Crescent Circle, parcel IDs 025-014183 and 025-014182. Ordinance 0048-2025, an ordinance to accept the public sanitary sewer infrastructure located along Crescent Circle, SA 1113.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. Section H, ordinances for second reading and adoption. We have two ordinances identified under this section, both of which we have discussed the need to return to Committee of the Whole for further discussion. Before we do that, I would like to request Mr. Van Meter read both ordinances into the record as required. Mr. Van Meter, would you please read ordinances, ordinances 42 and 43 into the record?
Ordinance 0042-2025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a development agreement with Connect Realty LLC, Benson Capital LLC, and the Gehanna Community Improvement Corporation for the redevelopment of vacant and blighted properties in the Creekside District. Ordinance 0043-2025, an ordinance adopting the 2026 to 2030 City of Gehanna Capital Improvement Plan, superseding all prior capital improvement plans and providing for future sunset.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. First, with regard to ordinance 42-2025, I would like to ask a procedural question. If we were to, do we need to enter into a first and a second to adopt and then move to postpone, or can we move to postpone before a motion to adopt is entertained?
I believe it would be before the motion is entertained. There would be a motion to postpone.
Okay, so we can move to postpone before we move to adopt?
Move to adopt, correct.
Okay. Okay. Well, so let me ask my colleagues. Is there a motion to postpone ordinance 42-2025 to a date certain? Just taking the first one in order.
Do you need a date?
Yes, it's best practice to actually identify a date.
What's the date that we need?
November 17th.
I will move to postpone ordinance 0042-2025 to November 17, 2025.
I have a first by Mr. Schnitzer.
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Renner. By way of discussion, I wanted to invite the administration, if they have anything that they wanted to weigh in with regard to this.
I'm going to look to Director Gocke. I am always happy to offer comments, but the director is sitting here right now. So Director Gocke, is there anything that you would like to comment on with regard to the rescheduling of this for postponement?
Let me put my thoughts together for a second. Maybe they won't come together, and I'll just say no and sit down. I guess, just, is there a reason why November 17th is specifically chosen instead of an earlier date, the 3rd or the 10th, or what is council hoping to ascertain in the meantime? This is 60 days since it was introduced. That's a pretty long time. Understand due diligence, lots of time to consider, but, you know, why is it the 17th and why not another date? And what else do you think is needed that could be provided to you? Thank you.
Anyone that would like to weigh in? I mean, I have my thoughts. Mr. Renner?
Yeah. Council just got the agreement on Friday, and so we need deliberation time on Committee of the Whole to be able to vet this. I'm not exactly sure if we need all the way to November 17th, but our procedure designates that we have to have a date certain. So in lieu of, you know, making a mistake on such an important decision, December or November 17th seems to be irrational. If we can do it sooner, we will, but we'll discuss it at Committee of the Whole.
Sure, if I may. First of all, I don't think, I don't think we're questioning pushing it back and not voting this evening. An initial draft of the agreement was presented September 22nd. The red line version was sent on Friday. The question would be, why November 17th? As Director Gocke just said, I think our concern would be, given the potential demolition of those properties that CIC holds, as we shared last week in conversation when the developer was here, the preference would be to have the developer themselves actually effectuate the demolition of those properties for many reasons. Number one, they then can control the infrastructure that's currently on those sites, so it sets them up for success as they then would move forward, which would be dependent upon passage of the development agreement. The second reason is if they demolish the properties, we certainly have a reimbursed, a reimbursable grant. If the cost of that demolition exceeds that, those grant dollars, that's on them, not on us. So the preference would be, obviously, to move forward in that direction. I do agree. I don't believe that a vote this evening would be appropriate. But like Director Gocke, I would, I would, I guess I would ask as well, why not November 3rd or November 10th, which would give us another, you know, certainly another committee meeting, potentially two opportunities for further discussion.
Well, like I said, I mean, we'll talk about it, but part of our procedure is, is we have to at least say date certain. And in order to actually not make a mistake, I support the, right now, the November 17th. I understand the pressures upon us. We've known about this since August, so I'm a, I'm a little perplexed as to, you know, why the hurry-up-and-wait type of attitude, but it is what it is, and we're going to actually, most of us on council have supported in any, many different ways of this project. I have publicly stated multiple times that I support this project, but I don't understand why we're getting information at the 11th hour. So, and we can talk about that separately, as you alluded to, but again, November 17th seems to be the most appropriate response at the moment.
Mr. Weaver? Thank you, Mr. Renner.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just say, in terms of the 10th, I have a general discomfort in terms of calling a special meeting for one vote on something that is probably going to be the largest.
I not only suggested that, I believe Councilwoman Bowers suggested that last.
I'm just taking it in turn. I, just a little discomfort calling a special meeting for a vote that is probably the largest vote that any of us will, or most impactful vote any of us will take during our tenure on council. While I appreciate Director Gocke's presentation last week, particularly on the parking, I continue to receive questions about the parking. I believe we are all continuing to receive feedback from residents. I know we have engaged with a private firm to do outreach. I would like to see a bit more of that. I would like to give the developer an actual expectation of a date in fairness to them for when they can expect a vote, rather than continuing to push back, push back, push back. I just think that gives us a reasonable amount of time and sets a fair expectation for them.
Yes, Mrs. Padova.
Have, if a vote is taken on the 17th, will they still be able to do the Have, if a vote is taken on the 17th, will they still be able to do the, um, demolition?
I'll have to check with them on that. Um, it would be a matter of scheduling with the contractor and mobilizing, uh, the contractor so that demolition could be completed by 12:31.
Can I touch base on that issue before you move on to another question? Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Padova. Uh, you know, I, I think I've shared with, with Mr. Gocke that my understanding is that the holiday light celebration will take place on November 23rd. And the holiday light celebration is perhaps the most concentrated population of Gehanna residents in a two-hour window, I think, that we ever see throughout the year. I would anticipate that no work would be started before November 23rd.
That's correct.
Which gives us reasonably until November 17th to be able to approve the development agreement or vote on it, as, you know, should the vote, uh, result in an approved development agreement. And then the developer can have the, have the confidence that they can move forward, uh, by the end of the year to, uh, to complete the demolition. I share the concerns that the developer, uh, should be the one to do the demolition work. I think that that is, that it is important for them to do that. Uh, but I also think for me, it is important that we also fully engage the community on this. And I do want to very much, uh, thank the media for their attention to the, to the work and to the, the items that we've done and to the residents that have come out to the various events that have occurred so far. Um, I certainly would like to see further engagement. Um, I would like to suggest a public hearing on November 3rd, uh, with this ordinance, um, called for public hearing. And then we could have a, another, yet another opportunity for designated feedback time from the community. I'd also really like to see the website, um, up and moving so that we can refer residents to a concentrated location, uh, to receive information about, uh, vetted information about the development project. And finally, Director Gocke, and this is, this is certainly, um, just because you asked, uh, there are outstanding asks and I know that we have a follow-up meeting later this week to discuss the fiscal impact analysis, but I certainly would like my colleagues to be able to make sure that they have time to sit with that, to really understand the, um, impact, uh, of what you will share with us and then be able to follow up with any further questions. So for me, I think the November 17th date is a, is a, is a fair date. It gives a date certain. It doesn't, it doesn't, it will reduce the likelihood of any kind of further delay, um, if we were to set it for the 3rd and then push it back again, which I know destabilizes the developers' plans. So for me, that's why I would like to, um, advance or postpone this vote to a date certain, which would be November 17th.
Okay, and, and please don't take my questions as being confrontational anyway. I agree.
Correct.
It's premature to vote tonight, but as, as I'm planning my time and, and resources, I, I need to understand how to line them up to deliver, um, what, what you want to hear. So is it your intent then to have two more committee meetings? One next week and another on the 10th?
I think if there are council questions, we should ensure that there is an opportunity for the item to be on both committee of the whole agendas.
Okay.
On the 27th and then on the 10th. Um, I certainly, I think that, um, and I think that it would be valuable to have a public hearing scheduled then on November 3rd as well on this item.
Okay, um, and, and I will verify with developers on the demolition schedule. It sometimes can be more complicated than just calling somebody up and having them start because they have other work they're doing, finishing, or lining up and, and they have to work that into their schedule. But, uh, we certainly will not do any demolition before the 23rd, uh, to, to not disrupt the festivities then, so.
Well, i- i- and if I could, and I'd echo what, what Director Gocke just said, please, I'll, I'll reiterate what he just said. My question about why the 17th was not intended to be combative. It was to understand so that we could go back and have conversations with the developer. The thought was never that we would begin demolition before holiday lights. Uh, I, I well know how many people are down in that area, but the thought was we need to give them enough time to align, uh, and prepare for, uh, and engage, uh, somebody to come in and do the demolition, which would be by December 1 in order to get it done by the end of the year. So trying to understand what that timeline is and then being able to be prepared with option A, option B, option C, depending on what happens over the next few weeks, is really the intent of the questions. Trying to understand what the concerns are so that we could be prepared to address them, uh, and then align timelines.
Sure, and I, I will open the floor back up to my colleagues to, uh, reiterate or identify if you have any other items that you'd like to see or further community engagement that you think would be appropriate for this item. Mrs. McGregor?
If we press it on the 17th, does it have to wait 30 days before it's in effect?
It does, but the developer, as I recall, has represented to us that our approval of it will greenlight their, uh, demolition, uh, agreement with the city.
Correct.
All right, Mrs. Padova?
The, I'm, I don't believe that you mentioned this in your ask, but the other thing that I would like to see is the, um, feedback that you guys have gathered from the, um, from planning next, which I believe that, um, Director Volmer was working on getting that to us, um, prior to taking a vote on this.
Anything further from my colleagues?
Yeah, I was just curious about the process to do and hear, um, a public hearing on the 3rd. Like, is that something that we can agree and align on so that residents can be prepared for that soon? Like, how do we do that?
Sure.
How do we make a public hearing or call a public hearing?
It's typically council discretion, but I would certainly invite the administration to make a, a brief presentation if you would like to, again, or not, as you have already done that multiple times. You can decide at a later time. Um, we would set it on our agenda just as we had this public, um, hearing on our agenda. And then certainly council office staff can generate, um, some social media graphics that we can distribute and would put a notice out, uh, via council's listserv and then perhaps request that also be done through the city's, uh, communication channels as well. Mr. Schnitzer?
Yeah, when, when you asked if council had any questions or comments, is that in relation to specifically the development agreement?
I think what we're speaking on right now is the postponement itself to the 17th and items that you would like to see the administration come back with at committee of the whole meetings.
As it relates to the development agreement?
As it relates to the development agreement.
Sure. Um, I had traded emails with the administration and the city attorney's office regarding, um, I guess, in, in a nutshell, contingent liabilities. Um, those questions were answered to my satisfaction. They could probably be beneficial for everybody up here to, to have access to that information too. So if that could be included in whatever discussion or presentation takes place a week from now. Also, um, in some way, shape or form, something that, that encapsulates, um, the city's financial estimates in pro forma with regard to TIF, NCA, et cetera, et cetera, to the, to the extent that we know them now. I understand that crystal ball is a bit murky and perhaps even cracked, but nonetheless, whatever numbers we're working with at this point in time, I think that would be good information for a week from now as well.
Okay.
And then finally, I'll just note, um, um, thank you to our Mifflin Township counterparts for being here this evening, uh, and thank you to Councilwoman McGregor for acknowledging the tax impact to the township and potential equipment costs. I would hope, uh, as well that the administration and the Mifflin Township representatives are able to have some meaningful conversations, uh, so that we can understand what the ask is, uh, clearly from Mifflin Township and if there would be, um, any expectations that we might have with regard to, uh, the TIF or, or other needs of the township.
We already have something on the calendar with them.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Director Gocke.
This has been very helpful, uh, again, as one of the recipients of the creekside@gehanna.gov emails to represent this conversation and, and your kind of sequence of, of meetings that, uh, now I can, I can do that accurately. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Director Gocke. Um, unless there are any further discussion items with regard to the motion to postpone to November 17th, anything else from my colleagues? All right, hearing none. Mr. Van Meter, if you would please call the roll on the motion for postponement to November 17th on ordinance 42-2025.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries and this ordinance is postponed until, uh, November 17th for a vote on adoption. The next item is ordinance 43-2025. Uh, this item, um, ha- is regarding the capital improvement plan. Uh, this, uh, the capital improvement plan was presented in part to us a few weeks ago. Um, unfortunately, we were not able to finish the presentation due to the lateness of that meeting. Uh, and so this has been requested to come back to committee of the whole on November 27th, uh, which would indicate a motion to postpone to a date certain of November 3rd, uh, which would be the right first regular meeting following next committee of the whole. Is there a motion to postpone ordinance 43-2025 to November 3rd?
Some movement, isn't it?
I have a first by Mr. Schnitzer.
Second.
A second by Ms. Jones. Any further discussion on this item?
No, but can you believe it's almost 2030?
Yeah, five-year planning to 2030, that's right. All right, Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
All right, motion to postpone carries and this item will be back on the agenda for adoption on, or, uh, on November 3rd. Section I ordinances for introduction, waiver and adoption, and, uh, there is a companion resolution in section J. Uh, Mr. Van Meter, would you please read ordinance 46-2025 into the record?
Ordinance 0046-2025, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriations and waiving second reading, general fund development contract services for the Gehanna Community Improvement Corporation.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. The companion resolution was, um, brought forward to pair with, uh, the supplemental appropriation ordinance 51, excuse me, resolution 51-2025. Uh, I suppose we will take these in order though and start, um, recognizing that the conversation will likely implicate both of these items. Uh, so with that, let's, um, address ordinance 46-2025. The administration has requested waiver of second reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading?
Some move.
I have a first by Mr. Schnitzer.
Yeah, a second.
And a second by Mr. Renner. All right, discussion on the motion to waive, suspend council rules and waive second reading?
Not much discussion, but just to state the obvious, it's necessary in order for this to get passed in time ultimately, since this is a backstop for, you know, funding. I don't know, we can wait.
I think that's what's confusing me about is the timeline itself.
Well, yeah, I have questions. So I ditto exactly what Councilwoman Schnitzer said. I fully support, 'cause this ordinance is just a supplemental appropriation. I have questions about the resolution and, uh, about the supplemental agreement, um, and if you want to get to that point or not. Um, but it involves the timeline. It, and that goes apropos to, uh, the developer agreement. I don't understand the timeline at all.
Well, perhaps we could maybe further tease out the timeline and why waiver is necessary? Because I'm not sure I'm clear on that. Um, my understanding is that because this is a supplemental appropriation, there is no 30-day hold and so it is effective immediately upon passage. Um, so I am very unclear as to why waiver is necessary if, um, if demolition would not occur until after November 23rd.
It would be my position, particularly based on this conversation this evening, that we, we need to move forward with scheduling demolition now. Uh, we have Thanksgiving, we have Christmas, so we say by the end of the year, to be realistic. If you're looking at the December calendar, you're not looking at the end of the year. Nobody's going to be doing demolition. Uh, I'm trying to pull up a, a December calendar. Uh, you're, you're looking at having demolition done by December 20th, uh, because nobody's going to be doing demolition the week of the 22nd. So you have effectively three weeks in December. You have holiday lights that we just said we will not do it before that, uh, which basically means we'll have three weeks. Uh, and it is, to your point, almost 2030. Uh, it's the, almost the end of October. Uh, today's October 20th. That means we have essentially three weeks in November, discounting the Thanksgiving week to get it, somebody in line to come in and demolish those properties effective December 1 through December 20th. That doesn't leave a whole lot of time. If we have to then wait, uh, for another meeting, uh, to have another, more conversation around it, then we just cut ourselves, uh, short even more. So I, I think that was, the original thought was, uh, based on conversations the council had at the last time around wanting to postpone this, uh, on the conversation Monday, last Monday, and there really wasn't a date that was identified. Uh, we expressed at that point that waiver would be important, uh, but I think in light of the conversation this evening, it becomes, uh, especially so. And I, again, I will refer to Director, both Director Schultz and Director Gocke, if they would like to add anything in that regard.
The CIC will not have the ability to sign a contract with a demolition company until the appropriations are passed by council. So, um, even getting somebody lined up tentatively, I mean, nobody, nobody in their, nobody, nobody from a business standpoint is going to line up tentatively to knock buildings down sometime after, if I remember the calendar correctly, the s- the 3rd maybe, uh, on when this would be voted on. Uh, and then we're jamming them into a window that might be untenable for them, uh, jeopardizing the $485,000 in grant dollars that we've received from DOD to knock the buildings down. So our position would be, uh, waiver is essential. A waiver and, uh, it's only a resolution, so, uh, only needs one reading, I think the second item, correct? Uh, but both items need to be passed, uh, sooner than later in order to not jeopardize the grant dollars further.
Thank you, Director Schultz. Um, City Attorney Tamara Larson, um, the impact of us approving the ordinance tonight with waiver without the, now my understanding is that the resolution needs further adjustment. Is that your understanding as well?
Yes. Um, the supplemental agreement was written with the understanding that the funds would be transferred to CIC and then if not used, returned, and then if used, returned after reimbursement occurred. It has been pointed out by the administration, um, I think an hour before today's meeting, that this would be a reimbursement basis and that the CIC would only get the funds if they were to go through with demolition and secure the grant funding. And so in that case, this has to be rephrased for that posture because as it is written, the city is paying them the money and agreeing to pay them the money, not subject to them, uh, scheduling and going through with the demolition. Um, and so I, I do think that there needs to be further revision to this supplemental agreement to adequately address this situation, uh, because the current 2025 CIC agreement does not account for the CIC returning money to the city. So there, there must be something in writing that ensures that they would return those funds to the city once they are, um, reimbursed by the state. And so there needs to be some details about the total of the grant money, about the, um, fact that we would be reimbursing them for the cost of the demolition and what, what the parameters of that are, uh, for application for reimbursement pursuant to the current contract, et cetera. So without getting into, like, making the, making the sausage, I do need further review on the supplemental agreement and I think it would be prudent to pass that in conjunction with the appropriation.
If I may?
And the impact, I'm sorry, Director, I have a follow-up question. And if the, if we were to adopt the ordinance 46 this evening without the accompanying, uh, resolution authorizing the supplemental agreement, then the effect would be purely a supplemental appropriation to the CIC without any obligation for the CIC to reimburse the city? Is that correct?
So I believe the way that the ordinance is written, this, the appropriation would be to secure the funding for the purpose of the CIC using it, but it would be held by the city. And then the CIC would apply for basically appropriation of that money, or sorry, reimbursement of that money once they incur the debt or secure the, the, so once we have the appropriated funds available for use, they would not receive the funds until they secured the actual demolition contract and then submitted that to our finance department and then essentially the PO was paid out. So the effect of appropriating the funds is to reserve the money within the city, available for use to the CIC.
I see.
The funds would not be, the funds would not be expended until, if, if CIC were to be the party that moves forward with the demolition, which based on the conversation we've had this evening, seems much more likely now than it did two hours ago. So if CIC were to be the party that moves forward with the demolition, we would, CIC would begin the process of securing a contractor to come in and do the demolition. Once a contractor would be secured, the question would then be, would, would the contractor do the work? And then we ask, the CIC asks the city for the money to pay the, to pay the contractor or would that, depending on what the terms of that contract would, contractor would be. But in any event, there would not, it would not be delivered to- But in any event, there would not, it would not be delivered to the CIC until there was an actual contract in place. Then, once grant dollars are, the reimbursed grant dollars come back, then those reimbursed grant dollars would be returned to the city.
So the CIC would receive the grant dollars, but there is, without the accompanying resolution, there would be no obligation for the CIC to reimburse the city?
Technically, no, but you have a mayor, two city council members, a director of planning and the director of economic development as part of CIC. So I would submit even a memorandum of understanding with regard to CIC, that that is, that is the understanding between CIC and the city in that regard would suffice, even if it was not formal legislation.
Can I, can I make a finer point, too, that the city?
I have a question as well.
Sure. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the city would be on, not on the hook, but the city would be funding demolition in total if it didn't, if it took place on January 1st or after. So we might be, I'm sorry?
Only if the city didn't apply for an extension or for a supplemental grant?
Sure, there's finer points that we don't believe that we're going to get from the DOD because I believe those questions have been asked, we can ask again. But if the, if the grants, if the grant, let's say we don't get the waiver, we've jeopardized the $485,000 on, on two weeks. And I believe that that meets the definition of, of waiver is, is what's the, what's the public benefit? And the public benefit is?
Half the money dealt.
Securing of the, of the funding. So I believe that it could, like the mayor suggested, by memorandum of understanding, you know, agreement, if you would, between us and the CIC, that they would reimburse the funds. I didn't see this particular item on the agenda until I looked it on Saturday morning, so.
Director, it's my understanding that the city has received, or the CIC has received quotes for the demolition from two other companies that are not related or associated with Connect?
I believe there's one, but yes.
Okay. And is that, is that within the grant, was the quote within the grant, the grant dollars?
Yes, it was.
And would the CIC, under what conditions would the, so, taking this in stride, because I think that there's been a lot of consensus around that we would prefer that Connect undertake the demolition, that there's benefit to Connect to undertake the demolition, that there's benefit to the city to undertake, that Connect undertake the demolition. So if council were to appropriate this half a million dollars to the CIC, at what point would the CIC make the decision to move forward with doing the demo versus allowing or ensuring that Connect has their opportunity to do so?
I believe with postponing, my, my opinion is that with postponing the development agreement to November 17th, that decision was made this evening, not by the CIC and/or Connect, but by, but by, but by pushing off of the development agreement. I do not believe, I do not believe that Connect, we've already heard.
Director, you're speculating and unless I have?
I don't believe I am speculating.
Unless the development team came in here and told us that they could not complete it, which they have never done so.
I believe that, I believe Mr. Lamb indicated last week that it would be difficult for them to know whether or not they had the time, that he couldn't commit to that, he said.
Correct. He didn't, he couldn't commit to it one way or another. And now we know that the demolition would not occur until after November 23rd. So again, I just wanted to get clarity around who makes the decision and when about whether the CIC undertakes the demolition.
I believe it would be CIC who makes the decision. They're the property owner.
All right. Any further questions from my colleagues? Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Quick clarifier, thank you, Madam President. So taking a look at the language that would constitute the, for the agreement and the resolution section, which just factors into the question of the motion for the waiver. Does the city attorney have language that she would suggest for section 3 dot 1, of which I believe is the offending provision or the, I don't want to say offending provision, but the provision of concern?
I have suggested, I mean, section 2 is also problematic because it is us obligating to pay them irrespective of whether they undertake the demolition. I have issues with section 3 because, again, that says, should they draw on the appropriation, again, they have to apply as an eligible expense pursuant to the current CIC contract. So I, I think that there, there needs to be some cleanup of both section 2 and section 3. And then there needs to be a confirmation on the total of the actual grant amount. There have been at least three different numbers thrown around. The $500,000, I believe, was in a staff report saying that that was the total of the grant. The red line says 486. The development agreement actually says 496. So I think there needs to be some clarity of what is to be expected upon application by CIC and then have it be consistent throughout this document.
So the grant dollars were 486,000. That was in the revised version I sent to you earlier today to clarify that. We had asked for 500,000 in the event that the, there was a delta between what the demolition costs were and what CIC might have to pay. So instead of, let's say, for example, the demolition costs $475,000 and we have reimbursable grant of up to 450,000, there's a 25, there would be a 25, I'm giving you hypothetical numbers, there'd be a $25,000 delta, then CIC would then have to come back and say, "Oh, council, now we need $25,000 to make up the delta." So when, in asking for the amount, we rounded it up just to provide a little bit of a delta for cushion in case the actual cost of demolition exceeded what the reimbursable grant dollars were. So the way the, the way the original agreement was written, there needed to be some clarity around the fact that we were still looking at potentially Connect Real Estate doing the demolition, in which case, none of the $500,000 would be spent, it would automatically go right back to the city. If, if CIC has to do the demolition, then they would reimburse all of the reimbursable grant dollars. And again, let's say the grant dollars are 486,000, let's say the grant, the actual demolition costs are $495,000. CIC is going to keep the delta because those are demolition costs and they would return whatever is in excess back to the city. So I think we're making this much harder than it needs to be. CIC would understand that any reimbursable grant dollars would need to be returned to the city and anything left over that they didn't spend would be returned back to the city that wasn't otherwise used for demolition. I think we're making this harder than it needs to be. I'm not really quite sure the cause for, for confusion around this. So I'm, I'm open to whatever kind of language you want to include around that, but at the end of the day, we just need to make sure that if CIC is the one to demolish, to demolish these properties, they agree that they will return the reimbursable grant amount of 486,000 to the city and, and anything that's left over above that.
Can I ask a question? So we're saying if CIC is the one to do the demolition, what if they're not? So like, how does this change then?
If they're not, this becomes, this becomes moot. And there is no $500,000 that is given to CIC.
Well, I mean, if Connect, like, if Connect is deciding to do it?
If Connect, if Connect does the demolition, then they get reimbursed the grant dollars.
Okay, and is that a different?
And any cost above that, go, they bear that.
That is contained within the development agreement?
That development agreement.
And that lists up to 496, but regardless, that can be corrected. Yes. So that is an obligation by the CIC to the developer through the development agreement. So it's not a separate agreement, it's in the development agreement.
So, but if CIC decides to do it, do we need to make changes to then the Connect development agreement if they're not doing that piece?
The development agreement does say that they, that the developer would, would demolish, that they shall be responsible for all demolition required for the development.
Right, but should they not do what this grant is saying, is that more changes than to the development agreement with Connect?
Let me just look at it one more time so I don't misspeak here.
It would be my position, it would not need to be revised because it would become a moot point. The demolition would already be done.
I, I think there would need to be at least some clarifying language to ensure that they don't have any claim over the reimbursed grant dollars. So the demolition cost would be zero, but the way the development agreement is written right now, it says that the CIC would reimburse them up to the grant dollars received. But essentially, the demolition would be zero. I think I would prefer, in a best-case scenario, to have some clarifying language in there in the event that they did not do the demolition, that they would not be entitled to any of the grant funds.
Okay.
I'd like to get clarity at our next committee meeting on the actual timeline for demolition, the actual contract timeline and when Connect would be able to schedule the demolition, assuming, in a hypothetical scenario, assuming an affirmative vote on November 17th. Mr. Schnitzer, yes?
Thank you, Madam President. So we just kind of dove right into the whole thing. So I do want to provide maybe a little bit of clarity for anybody that's sitting in the audience or watching at home. What's on the table right now is ordinance 0046-2025. And there was some discussion about that and we seemingly kind of went down this rabbit hole of the next item on the agenda, which is resolution 51-2025, which obviously those two were related. My comments prior were related to the ordinance, which is the supplemental appropriation of $500,000. And I don't want to lose sight of the fact that just a few weeks ago, we supplementally appropriated over $5 million to pay off some loans, largely for the purpose of having the flexibility to retain these demolition grants. And I guess what we're hearing from experts in the room that are, you know, party to these communications, have contractors, I guess, that they've been in communication with, is that time is of the essence. And for all of those reasons, and the fact that, you know, to piggyback off of the mayor's comments about practical control over the CIC when you have a significant amount of representation that sits in this room right now on that particular body, I'm comfortable enough with moving forward here, again, to give us maximum flexibility, all things considered, so that we don't unnecessarily put that $486,000 in grants at risk. And I'd be certainly happy to come back and talk about resolution 51-2025 either later this evening or at a later date if necessary.
Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Madam President. So clarifying question. If the concerns are primarily related to the resolution, does waiver of the, passage of waiver on the ordinance get the administration and the CIC and the developer where they need to be if the resolution is not agreed to this evening? Because the money would then be appropriated and reserved, but there is, it is not spent yet, is my understanding from the mayor's comments earlier. But give some assurance that the money is there to be expended if need be, pending what might happen with the resolution, to try and split the baby here.
Yeah, I do, I do believe, I think that there's an opportunity, I'll say it that way, to, to hold off on the resolution and get something that's more amenable at the next meeting with the supplemental appropriation as soon as possible. Right, because then the money is appropriated. We wouldn't expend, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, nobody's going to pay out the money in the next?
Two weeks.
Three weeks, right? While we're waiting for the agreement to catch up with, or MOU, whatever it is that we decide on, to catch up for reimbursement. So I do believe, Mr. Weaver, that that is a, I think that that would be tenable to us and a solution forward potentially. I thought last week that we were only adding to the resolution, well, I'm sorry, to the ordinance, one line that said we were going to, that it was going to be reimbursable and that was going to be okay. So I do think that that would work as a solution.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
That's it from me, Madam President.
Any further discussion? All right. On the motion to waive second reading, Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
No.
Jones?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Motion carries to waive second reading. We'll now move on to vote to adopt ordinance 46-2025. Is there a motion to adopt 46-2025 as published?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Renner and a second by Mr. Schnitzer. Further discussion on this ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation? All right, Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes.
If I may interject just briefly. There is, in the text of the ordinance, a reference to the grant funds and it's the same language that was mirrored in the original resolution, which is that the CIC was awarded a grant totaling $500,000. I, I don't know if there's any strict necessity to correct that to be accurate, but it should be two grants totaling 486 instead of a grant totaling 500. I just wanted, there's a, so I would recommend in a small amendment, there's a text of that ordinance to reference the accurate numbers.
Thank you, City Attorney Tamal Harrison. So it would be the third whereas clause, that the city attorney would be recommending an amendment that the CIC was awarded two grants the amount of $486,000.
I think it's the second whereas.
I see it as the third. Craig Side Redevelopment Strategy is the first whereas, in alignment with the redevelopment strategy is the second whereas.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one.
Okay, good. Okay.
Need a motion to amend?
A motion to amend is stated.
So moved.
First by Mr. Schnitzer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Renner. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none. Mr. Van Meter, would you call the roll on the motion to amend the whereas clause as identified, the third whereas clause in the, in the ordinance?
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Motion carries and the amendment is approved. To the underlying motion to adopt the ordinance, we have a first and a second on the table. Any further discussion this evening on this item? Hearing none. Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Renner?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Motion carries and ordinance 40, excuse me, I lost my place, 46-2025 is adopted. All right, resolution 51-2025, we have discussed this as well and it's my understanding that this is, there is a request or a recommendation to send this back to committee and then bring it forward at a, at a later date. Huh?
We don't have the appetite to do it now?
Amend it right now, no, we don't need to and we don't have the appetite.
No.
No. All right.
So, Madam President, I would make a motion to postpone resolution 51-2025 to a date certain of November 3rd, 2025.
And come back?
And have it come back to committee, but.
Second that.
I have a first by Mr. Weaver and a second by Mr. Schnitzer. Discussion on the motion to postpone to a date certain. Hearing none. Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Weaver?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Motion carries and the resolution 51 will be postponed to November 3rd, coming back to committee on October 27th. Section K, correspondence and actions, Mr. Clerk?
Nothing this evening.
And for my council colleagues? All right, moving on to Representative Section L, Renner and Padova on Community Improvement Corporation.
Tomorrow morning, we have a CIC meeting at 8 o'clock in the committee rooms.
Thank you, Mr. Renner. Anything further, Ms. Padova?
Nope.
All right. MORPC, Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Madam President. Thanks, as always, to council office for their assistance in preparation of the report. I would encourage my colleagues to take a look at the report and the attachments that were included. These highlighted the ROI or the return on investment on, that we received from our membership in MORPC. Top-line number here, our member dues totaled just under $23,000 with a return on investment of about $36 for every dollar and that we expend. of about $36 for every dollar in, that we expend in terms of our investment. So, I would encourage folks to take a look at that. Couple items to highlight from the report. The commission did meet on October 9th. Our next meeting will be on November 13th. The requests for 2026 summer interns are now open. I know both the administration and council office have enjoyed having MORPC interns in the office, and I, I hope that both administration and council office will take advantage of that again. Another item to flag for you, the Leaders Listen Sustainability Survey. MORPC and the Columbus Dispatch are inviting central Ohio residents to share their views on regional sustainability issues through the latest Leaders Listen survey. There's a link in the report itself. I know folks have expressed some interest in the Regional Economic Development Academy that MORPC has had ongoing, and you are able to take just course by course, you don't have to do the full, the full six courses, I, I should say, to participate. So, on November 6th is the, the academy will explore how rising housing costs are affecting central Ohio's economy and how communities can respond. The course on December 17th is the academy's capstone, but will examine the pros and cons of the various economic development tools available to, to communities, including TIFs, CRAs, enterprise zones, joint economic development districts, new community authorities, all terms that we have been hearing for the last couple of months here. And then last item that I would highlight here is on November 18th, there will be a strategic training for effective planning and zoning, or steps workshop. It will encourage folks to take a look at. More information is available in the link provided, and that will be all for my MORPC report.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Convention and Visitors Bureau, Councilwoman Padova.
Thank you. As mentioned here a few times this evening, November 23rd is the Holiday Light Celebration at Creekside. Many of our friends and neighbors will be there celebrating the holiday season, so invite everybody to come down, and I've been seeing a lot of things recently about to be a part of a community, you have to engage with the community, and a good way to do that is to volunteer for the Holiday Lights Festival at Creekside. So, you can go to Visit Gehanna to find different ways to volunteer. There are opportunities all throughout the day, so you can volunteer either before or after the celebration, if you want to spend time at the celebration, lots of different opportunities. So, go to Visit Gehanna to, .com to find out more information about that. Also, coming up is the Santa Race 5K, new this year. It will be held at Academy Park, and that is on December 6th at 9:00 a.m. So, again, you can go to Visit Gehanna to get more information about that. And that's all for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Padova. Councilwoman Jones, school board?
Yeah, just a brief congratulations to the GJPS Board of Education that has been recognized by the Ohio School Board Association as a board of distinction. The board will be formally recognized next month at the OSBA conference, which will be held here in Columbus. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Jones. Official reports, Mayor Jadwin.
Thank you. Again, congratulations to the members of GLIME, Gehanna Lincoln instrumental music boosters. They, I said they settled a debate that we had for years, when my husband and I were members of that, Glimm or Glime. And there was, as we were serving walking tacos in the boosters booth, that was always a conversation. But, as a former orchestra parent myself, I know firsthand the value that that organization brings, not only supporting the music programs at the school, but creating opportunities for students who might not otherwise have an opportunity to participate. So, thank you, Councilwoman Weaver, for taking the steps to have them recognized this evening. I think their impact is immeasurable within the community. Thank you also to Make Gehanna Yours for hosting the Cleaner Greener Gehanna Community Litter Pickup. This past Saturday, I volunteered with members of, fellow members of Gehanna Rotary. We had a great time doing that, but there were many volunteers. I knew Senior Director, Deputy Director Wybensinger was there with his family as well, and it was just wonderful to see so many folks out helping to make, keep our city beautiful. So, many thanks to them as well for, Make Gehanna Yours for their efforts. Congratulations to New Life Church, they just celebrated their 40th anniversary. I imagine Councilwoman McGregor may be speaking to that a little bit, but it was a, a pleasure to be at their special anniversary celebration yesterday, and to hear the history of that church and how it began right here within our community and how far it's grown. So, here's to them and many more years of serving our community the way that they do. Thank you, Councilman, again, for your reference of the MORPC report. Earlier today, I had, was invited to participate in a, a special conversation on housing within the Columbus region. So, I was there representing Gehanna with more than a dozen central Ohio communities. We talked about challenges that we see in adding housing within our communities, challenges in, in terms of everything from processes to financing, to conversations like tonight, how do you add housing where you need it, the type of housing that you need, how do you go about strategic planning for housing to make sure that you are adding what your community needs? So, we look forward to having many more conversations on that, but it was a great, great conversation with lots of ideas shared. We mentioned Creekside Reimagined. Like to thank the many residents and stakeholders who attended the, I think it was the fourth public engagement we, we had on Thursday, October 9th at the Plaza from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We had approximately 100 folks that showed up and were asking questions, providing input, very valuable input, on both the public project that has been generally discussed here, and will be discussed in the coming weeks as we go through the budget process, as well as the private, private project that we discussed this evening. So, we look forward to continued engagement on that. We are working with a firm who, just late this afternoon, sent us some of their suggestions for next steps for us in that regard, so looking for some further announcements later this week in terms of what that looks like with our next opportunities for public engagement. But in the meantime, questions can be submitted to creekside@gehanna.gov. There's also a latest news item on gehanna.gov that links to some background of both the public project and the private project, with links to meetings, et cetera. Upcoming events this Friday, Great Gehanna Goblin Fest, always a great community celebration. Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. is Shred and E-Rycle here, and that is a fall event. We obviously do, has done the one in spring. Last year, we added, due to popular demand, a fall event as well, and that event will be this Saturday. GRIN will be on hand again, accepting donations, both food and monetary, to help support them, especially as they head into the holiday season, always very important. And then Trick or Treat will be Thursday, October 30th, in line with MORPC recommendations. And I appreciate, I did receive an email from a fourth grader who wanted to know why we could not have it on a Friday, October 31st, and I explained the conflict that we have, not only with high school football games, but with many other events that happen around the community, and the demands that that has for our public safety team, and how having it on a weekday actually helps to ensure that people are home to answer the doors and that more candy is given out. So, hopefully we'll, I'm not even going to talk about weather, we'll wait to see what happens, because it was 82 on Saturday and 59 on Sunday, so it's Gehanna and it's Ohio. And then finally, we have member, many members of our Gehanna resident, Gehanna community, many residents who are celebrating Dewali this week, which is their festival of lights. It's a celebration of light over darkness, good over evil, knowledge over ignorance. But it is a wonderful event that many folks in our community are celebrating, so may this Dewali bring you and them joy, light, and prosperity. And that is all that I have this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Jadwin. City Attorney Tamara Harrison?
Nothing from me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney Tamara Harrison. All right. Onto council comment. We will start with city, excuse me, city, Councilwoman Nancy McGregor.
Thank you. One thing I wanted to say was the historical, and I don't know if I've said this before, but the, the Red Book of the Historical Society was covered areas up until 1976, which is now like 50 years. So, we are doing an update of the Red Book, and we have many people contributing stories, and if anybody has a story of a historical, you know, of historical significance for all of Gehanna, and you'd like to write something about that, we'd be more than happy to have it submitted. We have our project manager Darlene Molitor in the audience, and our editor Mara O'Donnell. So, she's, they're keeping us on track. So, and if anybody'd like to come to our meetings, we meet at the library, not for the Red Book, but for the lot, just a general historical side meeting, we've been meeting at the library, and on the second Tuesday at 7:00, so we welcome anybody to come. And I thank you for mentioning New Life. New Life has been here for 40 years. We're celebrating, we were celebrating on Sunday. They have had three pastors. Actually, the first two each were for 20 years. We just had the new pastor this last year, and they came to Gehanna, they started like with five, there were five men, and three of them were married, and one had a baby, and it was an interesting concept, because they came here as a team to plant. So, when you went to church, you didn't, they had people that like took care of the nursery and set up, so you didn't have to be overwhelmed if you went to the church at the beginning. You could kind of take it all in and see if that was a good fit for you. But they were, they gradually, they started in Middle School West, then they moved to, they were looking for land, and they came and asked Jim if he knew of any property at the time, and he looked around and found the property, suggested at Grant, at McCutcheon and Stell's Stigler. And it had some issues, I think it was, there's a creek running through it, and they kind of had to think about it, but that's where they eventually located. So, 40 years of, of doing, helping the community, and they've really, they help a lot, they do a lot with GRIN at different times of the year, so, and we've been members not continuously from the late, probably the late 80s. So, I just wish them a more success as the next 40 years. So, that's all.
Thank you, Mrs. McGregor. Mrs. Jones?
Well, thank you. Just wanted to say congratulations and welcome to the new officers, and a thank you to Councilwoman Weaver for the arts and humanities recognition this evening as well, and a congratulations and thank you to GLIME. As a young person where the arts truly found, helped me to find belonging and find a space where I needed it the most, and now seeing that as a new orchestra mom, I'm sure I will be on Glimm shortly, and just really excited to see that they're in our community, providing arts opportunities for all of our students. So, thank you again for that recognition and for them for being here. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Mrs. Padova?
Thank you. I want to echo Councilmember Jones's, congratulations to the officers that were sworn in this evening, and also thank you to our guests for the Arts and Humanities Month Resolution. I also, kind of on that same topic of arts, I was blown away this weekend by the Collective Home Supply did a clothing swap, which I, I know I've mentioned before that Councilman Renner kind of lives in my head saying, do you need that? What's that made out of when I'm, when I'm about to purchase something? And standing, so going shopping has been a little bit difficult, but going to a clothing swap where everything is just a bunch of people bringing clothes that they no longer, it wasn't, it wasn't bring your bag that you're going to take to Goodwill, it was bring something that you were once excited about and no longer excites you. They had tables and tables, all categorized, different, different pants, sweatshirts, sweaters and such, but they really did this wanting to create a place where people could, somebody could go and meet a new friend, or you could talk to a stranger. And so, I was kind of looking through things and listening to some of the conversations, and it was happening. People were talking to each other, people were talking about where they were from. A lot of people were not from Gehanna. This was a huge driver of people coming to Gehanna that are not from here, and then going into the store and checking out the store, and hopefully going and seeing other things in Gehanna as well. There was one person who ran into somebody from college and had just moved back, and neither of them lived in Gehanna, they both lived in separate cities in central Ohio. So, it was just really cool to see this idea that Tracy and Rose had become something that was just so special, and everybody was just having the greatest time, so, and also supporting the local business, which everyone knows I, I love as well. So, thank you to Tracy and Rose for putting that on and doing such an excellent job and taking the chance of, this might work, it might not, let's see what happens, because I would say that it was very much a success, and hope to see it happen here again. That's all for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Padova. Mr. Renner?
Yes, thank you. Kaylee, thank you so very much for that. You know, one of the things that I always learn from you is, is that there's little tidbits that are going on in Gehanna. Nancy, you do too, with the Historical Society, and I always appreciate that. You, you remind me, I've been after Suaco and Joe LaBardi and Hannah Greer-Brown. They have a program for recycling textiles. Upper Arlington is now, or has been a member. I understand that Gehanna is talking to Suaco about it, but I can't wait, you know, bring it forward, bring it up, and let's start tooting our horn. You know, on that note, Corey has done something very, very wonderful, and I know that, I don't want to steal your thunder, but renewable power is really important. I just read over this weekend that the growth in electricity demand alone in this country is going to be 150 terawatts a year. We're talking the size of the grid of Texas. Let that sink in. So, I'm not going to belabor the points about, you know, we need to actually decarbonize, but if we're going on our current trajectory with 150 terawatts, that's all natural gas or coal, I mean, come on, what are we going to do? You remember the heat waves that happened this summer? Remember last summer? Remember the summer before? It's not a coincidence. So, yes, sustainability is very important. We should champion. Thank you, Kaylee. Thank you, Mayor, for what you're doing on that side. So, it got me off on a little bit of bend. But, thank you to the officers, and congratulations to Officer Lish and Officer Cardy. It's always a wonderful thing to actually watch newbies come to our, our police force. And Councilman Weaver, thank you very, very much. I think Councilwoman Jones said it the best about the humanities, and thank you. Having two sons that actually gone through the program, and we know all about Tag Day, and I was a driver for Tag Day multiple times, and I, I just, now that there, I had OSU, didn't know anything about, you know, when it was, but when a student came knocking my door, I was like, oh, I know what you're about. Let me get my checkbook. Hold on one second. So, it, it's a wonderful thing, and seeing on the inside and the impact that GLIME actually, or Glimm, does for the students is, is unsurmountable. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renner. Mr. Schnitzer?
Nothing to add this evening, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnitzer. Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Madam President. First, congratulations and a huge welcome to Gehanna, to our new officers. I'd like to again thank our GLIME representatives for being here, Ms. Kearns and Ms. Kreitz. I would also be remiss if I, I didn't give a shout out to the High Schools Orchestra teacher, Mr. Dingle. I believe he also teaches at, at the Middle School, or Middle School East as well. I imagine you're very excited for the possibility of new cellos and a new bass, if I recall correctly. And Mr. Renner, I, I, was it Liam who absolutely blew me away with his ability on the piano?
Caleb. Liam was the violin, Caleb with trumpet and piano.
Definitely put my piano skills to shame, and I've been playing for almost 30 years, Wonderful to see so much involvement in instrumental music here in our community. Also want to thank, I, I saw several members of our steering committee for the Argahanna Strategic Plan in the gallery this evening, so thank you all for being here. And lastly, I'll just note, I recognize that this evening, there was a good bit of parliamentary procedure and a lot of back and forth. and a lot of back and forth on some issues. I appreciate folks sticking with us and continuing to follow along. I don't like to speak for my colleagues, and I never do, but I believe I can safely say that we are all deeply interested in making sure that we get this right and follow process, and take our time and are diligent with everything, so that we are as fully prepared to vote on, on whatever issue on a given day. So, I appreciate folks for following along. And that's all for me, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Just, just very briefly, and again, a lot of, I think, redundancy perhaps for my colleagues, but thank you for all of you who are in attendance this evening. I know there are some folks here that I got to meet through some of these engagement processes, and so this speaks to how important it is for us to continue to engage the community in a really meaningful way, especially when it comes to projects as meaningful and as impactful as this private development project. So, thank you for your investment. This is a team sport. This is, you know, we need you here, and I've shared that before with some folks who are in the room, that, that we need to hear your feedback and have your participation, and we need to be responsive to what you need in order for you to be engaged as well. My reticence with regard to the supplemental appropriation to the CIC is largely due to the fact that I, there have been, there has been so, there's been a lot of questions asked. There's been a lot of dialogue. The developer has been in front of us a couple of different times. I'm a little surprised that they're not here this evening to help clear up whether or not the demolition could proceed after the twenty-third, if the vote takes place on the seventeenth. It is certainly our interest to be fiscal stewards of the community, of the, of taxpayer dollars here, and to ensure that this significant sum of money is not duplicating efforts that could or should be done by the private sector and then reimbursed by this grant that we have been so generously and gratefully awarded from the state. So, it is, while this perhaps gives some greater flexibility, there has been no clarity or, or statement provided by the developer that they're not able to meet these deadlines, and I certainly hope that they are able to, to do so, given the information that they have and the date certain that they know a vote will take place on. We await information from the administration. I know I await information as well, and so I look forward to having an opportunity to review all of that and for us to truly be able to weigh all of those factors, as we, to my colleague, Mr. Weaver, said, make one of the most impactful votes that I think we will take during our term of service. We have an executive session on this evening's agenda. It is a, there will be no action taken to, following the, this executive session. This is at the request of the administration to go into executive session under ordinate, under authority of section five point four zero B of the Council Rules of Procedure to consider the purchase of public property, excuse me, of property for public purposes in accordance with section five oh five point one zero of the Revised Code, if premature disclosure of information would give unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to persons whose personal private interest is adverse to the general public interest. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the reasons stated? I have a first by Mr. Schnitzer?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Renner. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Motion to go into executive session carries. Following executive session, we will adjourn without further action. Thank you for your time this evening.